Good afternoon. We will call today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council to order. Thank you for joining us. We'll begin today's meeting with a roll call of council members.
Councilman DeCecio? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Noakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams? Vice Mayor Wadato?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here. Thank you all for joining us for today's meeting. I'll turn to our executive, to our Vice Mayor for a call for executive session. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with a property posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, section 38 through 431 dot 038, meet an executive session on Thursday, May 14, 2020 at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona. Additionally, I move to change the start time of the Thursday, May 14, 2020 policy session from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Second. I'm here. We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilwoman Pastor. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. We will have an executive session of the city council on the 14th. I will next turn to our city manager for budget updates and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We continue to monitor the economic situation and impacts of COVID-19 on budgets around the country as well as here in Phoenix. And so just to let you know the latest on what we have seen locally, I think we talked last week, locally Mesa and Tempe have each announced furloughs and layoffs of part-time and some full-time employees, mostly in their parks and recreation and library departments. Just yesterday, the city of Dallas announced almost 500 employees will be furloughed without pay from May through July 31st. In Colorado, the city of Aurora will furlough 576 employees indefinitely. And the city of Los Angeles has announced that thousands of its workers will be furloughed for 26 days in the upcoming year, which is equivalent to 10%. So we continue to monitor our economic position here. There's still not enough revenue data for us to currently be able to predict what's going to happen next year. And the next milestone for us will be April sales tax results, which we should receive around this time in June. So about 30 days from now, we'll have more data available. And so in the meantime, we're compiling potential reductions for the council's review and discussion in June, which all reemphasizes the importance of the dialogues that the council's been having about the coronavirus relief fund. And I just wanted to, on a more positive note, give you some encouragement about the plan that you have adopted. Just yesterday, our chief financial officer and deputy city manager were on a phone call with over 200 finance officers from around the United States. And they received a lot of feedback from those who had paid attention to what we had done, asking for copies of the City of Phoenix Plan, the PowerPoints, because they thought it was notable, the way the council has strategically allocated into a framework and also been strategic in a reserve part of that to anticipate any future federal guidance or second waves of coronavirus expenses. So just an encouragement to the council that the time and energy and work that you've put in so far have been noticed here in the city by our employees, who are appreciative, but also nationally by finance professionals. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. It is sobering to learn how deeply cities have been impacted by lost revenue and difficult times with, as we respond to COVID-19. We will next turn to our assistant city manager for an update on the city's response to COVID-19. Milton DeHoney.
I'll be right with you, Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio, did you just join us?
I did, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Wanted to make sure we acknowledged you.
You bet. Thank you for that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We're here today to give an update on our proposed testing program. We are committed to supporting the implementation of testing both internally and in the broader community. We started our negotiations with ASU with a focus on first responders due to the dynamic nature of their jobs. Not only will their test results benefit them, but analysis of their dataset should give us a glimpse into how far COVID-19 has penetrated Phoenix. Since ASU BioDesign is a lab and not a healthcare provider, we've had a lot of details to work through. It has been complicated, but we continue to see a value in the data analysis and hope to continue with those discussions. However, we don't want to delay the beginning of testing while we work out the final details of the analysis protocols. So what we would propose is to begin testing this Thursday on all city employees that want to be tested, having everyone go through the Banner Portal. This is, again, the COVID test to determine if you have the live virus in your body. This testing would take place at the fairgrounds. The city will still have the responsibility to do the contact tracing for all positive tests. Additionally, you will remember, we also discussed community testing, specifically a potential partnership with Sonora Quest. The proposal is to have community testing take place at Indian School Park. I'm happy to report that the ongoing discussions and work with Sonora Quest seems to be bearing fruit. At this point, we are projecting that Sonora Quest would be ready to begin community testing on Saturday, May 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, and every Saturday thereafter from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. Their testing would be on a first-come, first-served basis. Either drive-up or walk-up, individuals would be able to be served. Additionally, there's been an interest in trying to find other potential locations for pop-up testing in the community. In order for those things to happen, we need a facility, and we also need a clinical partner. We have looked at Desert West Park at 67th Avenue in Encanto. That facility, the parking facility, does have the logistical setting, if you will, to set up a pop-up testing site at that location. However, in order for it to become operational, we need a clinical partner to work with us. I have had preliminary communication with Valleywise about being our potential clinical partner at that site. They are having internal discussions to decide if they have a confidence level, that they have the capacity to actually run the site, in addition to the other responsibilities that they have. So as that evolves, I will certainly be communicating with you. You will recall in our last session, Councilmember Williams also suggested Metro Center as a potential site. That site is still in queue, and should we be able to work these things through for Desert West Park, we would start to look at that next. And again, we would need to have a clinical partner in order for it to work. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have for you this afternoon.
Wonderful, thank you for that update. We do have one member of the public who is interested in addressing the council on this item, so we will go to the phones now. Luke Black, the floor is yours. Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Afternoon, council. Just a really quick couple of things. One, I just want to address some accessibility issues. It took, I'm actually super grateful that the city has made some strides to improve access for folks over the phone, and then also creating an option for folks to leave comments on the website. Accessing this meeting, though, took 17 steps, and that's really just not acceptable. Like, I recognize that this is a different program, but 17 steps is really, really hard for folks to get into these meetings. So I would ask that the council continue to work on that. Thirdly, coming back to this COVID funding, the city needs to continue to work to find support for undocumented communities. They continue to pay into the general fund, they continue to fill up the census, and everybody in Phoenix benefits from that. And we have an obligation as this city to take care of all of the residents, and so I would continue to ask the city to provide support for undocumented funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember comments or questions on the city's response to COVID-19?
Mayor, this is Councilman Noakowski.
Councilman Noakowski, please go ahead.
First of all, Milton, thank you for the Maryvale area, which we have a high number of individuals with the virus out there. I think it'll be a perfect location, so thank you for looking into it, and hopefully we can find a partner. Also, if you have a chance to talk to Abrazo Healthcare in South Phoenix to create another site out in South Phoenix, that would be excellent. And also, if you could talk to Dignity Health in the Levine area, which also has high numbers out in that area, that would be another spot that I would recommend. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmen, for the great ideas, and thank you to Milton for the hard work. There have been reports that Arizona is at the bottom in terms of per capita testing, and I'm glad that the city can be a partner in increasing access to testing. This data is so important for us to understand the spread of the pandemic in Phoenix and to be able to respond appropriately. There's recent news read as reports that we are one of nine states with increasing cases of COVID-19. To be able to respond, we have to be able to know where those cases are, and we want everyone in our community to have access to testing. So appreciate, Milton, your work on this, and all the council members who have been supporting it. Any additional councilmember questions or comments? Wonderful, thank you, Milton. We will next go to the Arts and Culture Coronavirus Relief Program. I will turn it over to our deputy city manager, Karen Peters, to introduce the item. And while she gets up, this is an item where the council has previously allocated funds, but now we're going to talk about some of the details about the program. And we have received significant numbers of comments from the public in support of our arts and culture communities during this difficult time.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Before I pass it on to Karen and staff, I wanted to first reorient you to your strategic plan that the city manager mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So again, we've got $293 million worth of coronavirus relief funds that you took action on last week and put together this strategic plan. The first bucket was $75 million for community investment, and that's where we're going to spend a little bit of time in this presentation today, specifically in the area of business assistance. As you know, Chris Mackey walked you through a very detailed plan last week as it pertained to these funds. First and foremost, there's $5 million allocation to small business assistance for loans via the IDA and the ACF. Also, a small business guidance for legal assistance and other technical assistance for $100,000. Also, a restaurant restart program for $1 million. And airport small business assistance for $1 million, as well as micro enterprise funding for $6 million. The piece that Chris did not really fill out for you was the piece that we're going to be talking to you about today, which is a $2 million allocation to arts and culture, which Karen Peters, Mitch Manchaca, and Rachel Johnson will be talking to you at length about.
Thank you, Jeff, and good afternoon, Mayor and council. I am very pleased to bring this item to you and very grateful for the allocation that was made at the last meeting to arts and culture. I want to introduce our main event, but I also want to give my deep thanks to Mitch Manchaca and his team in the Office of Arts and Culture. When the shutdowns and cancellations began in the arts community, Mitch was right there in close communication with our organizations and was very, very proactive to get resources posted on our City of Phoenix webpage so that those could access resources. So I am very pleased today to introduce Mitch Manchaca from the Phoenix Office of Arts and Culture, as well as our vice chair of the City of Phoenix Arts and Culture Commission, Rachel Johnson. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Karen. As we get set up here, we're going to try to do double duty on one computer.
My name is Rachel. My name is Rachel Frazier Johnson. I am the vice chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. I also serve as the chair for the Central City Village Planning Committee. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and to be able to share with you my insights as a member of the commission and a resident of the city of Phoenix.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallego, and members of the council. I am very pleased to be here, and thank you for your support. Today, we will share some facts on the state of the arts nationally and locally, as well as discuss a proposal on how to disburse the $2 million allocated from the coronavirus relief fund for the sector.
First, I would like to say thank you for taking time to hear from us about the arts and culture sector and the coronavirus relief funding package. Since 1985, the city of Phoenix has invested and championed on the city's arts and culture community, which makes Phoenix a wonderful place to live, work, and visit. We know the arts creates a high quality of life, which is beneficial in attracting and retaining businesses, as well as their workers, creating memorable experiences for visitors, and also making residents like myself wanting to remain here in Phoenix with our families. The arts also provide solutions to some of the city's vital issues, like heat readiness and transportation infrastructure. According to the recent Americans for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity Report, the Phoenix nonprofit arts and culture sector is an essential industry. One that generates a little over $4 million in total economic activity, employs over 12,000 full-time equivalent jobs, thereby generating over $285 million in household income. In addition, the industry delivers over $44 million in local and state government revenues. Nearly 5 million people in all city council districts, including 862,460 youth, have participated in arts programs and events hosted by Phoenix's nonprofit arts and cultural organizations in the past year. Individual artists are hired as contractors, staff members, and educators by our nonprofit arts and culture organizations, as well as other businesses and industries. At the city of Phoenix, we hire artists to work with our human services departments, creative aging program, also with parks and recreation classes, and with our own public art program. As the proud past chair of the commission's public art committee, I want to highlight that at the city of Phoenix, artists are contracted through the percent-for-art fund to help innovate solutions to city issues like bus shelters. Bus shelters which can add more shade coverage when designed through the public art program than a traditional bus shelter, including the newest bus shelter, which was installed on 19th Avenue in Maryland, as well as help with infrastructure enhancements like the new pedestrian bridge pictured in the slide that you're looking at over the new section of the 202. Besides providing employment for artists, these projects hire fabricators, trade workers, construction crews, and more, providing numerous jobs and enormous economic impact.
So those are in good times. However, due to coronavirus, that's not the case right now. The arts and culture sector is in peril, like many. However, the arts rely on a mix of earned and contributed income that are having both staggering losses. Nationally, to date, the nonprofit arts and culture sector has had almost $5 billion in losses. 34% of organizations have reduced their creative workforce, which is artist contracts. 71% have reduced staff through furloughs and layoffs, and 24% have had to reduce salaries and payroll. Over 300,000 jobs nationally have been lost that were once supported by the nonprofit arts and culture sector. In Phoenix, arts and cultural nonprofits are forecasting losses between $10,000 and $1 million from March 1st through now. 66% of organizations have had to implement their own reductions in staff with furloughs and layoffs and canceled artist contracts. Nationally, with individual artists, they have lost over $300 million of lost income from their artistic practices. 71% of artists make their living from sales and commissions to individuals alone, while 68% reported that they earned income from arts organizations and businesses. Many artists work jobs outside of the arts and are part of the gig economy. 48% have stated that they have been laid off from their non-artists jobs, while 32% have had their hours or pay cut. Locally in Phoenix, at the start of the pandemic, the Phoenix Office of Arts and Culture partnered with the Arizona Commission on the Arts, the Arizona Community Foundation, Art Link, and the Arts Foundation of Tucson in southern Arizona on an emergency relief grant program for individual artists and arts professionals. The fund would provide grants to be applied to gigs, jobs, and contracts that were outright canceled or terminated since March 1st. From the applications, we learned that individual artists documented a loss of $1.5 million in canceled contracts from March until now. Income loss is likely five to 10 times greater, given the fact that the artists were only asked to substantiate immediate lost income up to $1,500.
In essence, this is a critical time to help support the cultural sector. Many businesses will reopen this week and try to get back on their feet after being closed for a couple of months. Unfortunately, the arts and culture sector won't reopen. Many closed their doors, canceled their performances, exhibitions, and school programs before the stay-at-home order took effect. Because of the nature of their businesses, this required cutting contracts with artists, performers, designers, and technicians. The Office of Arts and Culture has done a fantastic job of sharing resources with artists and organizations and has convened the field virtually over the past two months. Through those conversations, we know many had to cancel the end of their season, stop their fundraising plans, and withdraw their summer programming. Many will reopen in mid-to-late summer, and most performing arts organizations are planning a reduced season for next fiscal year. Artists and the arts and cultural organizations of our community need support to help close the financial gaps, save jobs, and to have the capacity to be innovative in their operations and programming over the next few months. That's why this $2 million in emergency relief funding is crucial.
Thank you, Rachel. We are proposing to you, Mayor Gallego, and members of the council, a plan to provide support for individual artists between $46,500 and $195,000, grants to nonprofit arts and cultural organizations, being the biggest chunk of the $2 million, and then a technical assistance package of $15,000 to the greater sector. As mentioned before, the Phoenix Office of Arts and Culture partnered with partners on an emergency relief grant for individual artists and arts professionals. We only contributed $8,500 from our state arts commission grant that we receive annually to ensure that some Phoenix artists would be awarded funds early on. More than 500 applications were submitted in an eight-hour period. The funders decided to close the application to manage expectations. However, we did put up a sign-up sheet for artists to sign up if they wanted to get notification if the application would reopen, and over 1,000-plus artists did give us their contact information. Some councilmembers have asked about how this process worked. The city of Phoenix and other funders sent their portions to a collaborative fund at the Arizona Community Foundation. The foundation collected more than $170,000 to disburse. The fund partners decided that the best course of action was for the Arizona Commission on the Arts to manage applications and disburse the grant award since it was a statewide fund. Applicants had to submit a narrative on their work and loss plus documentation of lost income. The selection process for the emergency relief fund assumed value and need as a fundamental condition and did not rank applications according to subjective merit or persuasiveness. Applications were reviewed for eligibility and completeness, then considered through the dual lens of equity and geographic parity, in accordance with the partner's commitment for the fund. Following the review and considerations, applications were entered into a process for randomized selection. 230 artists were selected to receive $750 grants from the fund statewide. Many of these artists were from Phoenix, representing all council districts and all artistic disciplines. To accept the funds, the individuals had to complete a grant contract generated by the state arts commission and complete a W-9 form. For our new support for this, for individual artist support, we are proposing funding all eligible Phoenix artists in three different scenarios for your guidance. Option one would be to fund all the Phoenix artists in the first round of investments. What this means is that we would be putting back $46,500 back into the collaborative fund to ensure that the city of Phoenix funded the original 62 artists. Option two, funds option one and those who applied but didn't receive a support due to lack of funding. To be equitable, we would suggest keeping the grant amount at $750. This would be putting $106,500 into the collaborative fund. Option three would be funding artists from options one and two, plus letting all Phoenix artists who signed up on the wait list to apply and support for eligible grants of $750. These artists would be required to complete the full application, and the investment would be about $187,500 for about 260 artists through the first wave of artists funded, those that weren't, and those on the wait list. All three options allow the statewide collaboration to fund artists outside of Phoenix. However, the Office of Arts and Culture would take on the administration of the Phoenix Artists Awards in options two and three, and send out notification award contracts and W-9 forms, since it would be a larger share than the other funders. So those are three options that we have proposed that you can think about as we go through other portions, or I can, happy to take questions now on the individual artist support.
Mayor?
Mayor? Councilman, was that Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes.
Either way, I'm fine.
I wanted to talk to, oh, sorry, Councilman DeCecio. Can I go first?
Oh, absolutely. No.
Thank you.
You bet.
Option three, that's only 260 artists, am I correct? Mayor Gallego, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, yes, that is correct. From data that we've received from the state arts commission, that would be the 62 artists that were already funded, the 142
that were already funded, the 142 that, plus 80 that didn't receive funding making 142, and about 120 that are on the wait list to apply.
Okay, and what if I wanted to up that to 1,000 artists?
That would be amazing, Councilwoman Pastore. What we would then suggest if that were the case, to be equitable and fair, is to reopen the artist application beyond those on the wait list and do outreach with that kind of investment to ensure that artists here and far in the city of Phoenix knew about the opportunity and had the opportunity to apply.
Okay, um, thank you, and I'll, I'll probably come up with something. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Pastore.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I will turn to you when we, when we complete the presentation for a possible motion. Councilwoman DeCecio, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just so, I'm just not clear, of, of the amount of monies, the $2 million that were allocated last week, how much of that is going to the individual artists in percentage-wise?
So Mayor Gallego, members of the council, Councilwoman DeCecio, what we're recommending is out of that $2 million, that $46,500 to almost 200,000, so almost 10% of it, could go to individual artist support in this proposal, depending on what option council recommended.
So just from my perspective, I, the majority of the council saw the smaller artists as small business people. You know, it's not just about funding arts or not, it's just supporting the small businessman and woman as well. So from my end, it just looked like there was a disproportionate amount, considering the conversation that we had last week, going to large organizations rather than the small ones. I would go along with what Councilwoman Pastore is looking to accomplish here. Maybe we look at a more equitable split of the $2 million. Now, I'm not favorable toward adding any more to this, because you've got other organizations, other businesses out there that are struggling as well. But I get what we were trying to accomplish here, but adding any more would be problematic for me, but I would be supportive of upping that amount of the $2 million going to the small local artists that have applied, in particular, the ones that applied. I like where Laura is going on this, and it makes logical sense, because the whole idea was to fund them and get them through this hard time and allow them to flourish as well. So that, you know, I don't know if anyone's looking to make a change in that percentage, but I'd be favorable to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Mitch, back to you.
Great, maybe going through the organizational and the other components might help with some of the idea generating that is happening. So moving on into organizational support, as you know, the Office of Arts and Culture does have an annual community arts grants program, and we believe in the fair and treatment access and opportunity for all residents. Our equity strategy with our funding aims to identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented the full participation of marginalized groups from the agency's programs and to strengthen equity, diversity, and inclusion in the arts and culture sector for the community. And this past year, our office has done briefings with Deputy City Manager Karen Peters and others about ensuring an equity lens on our funding, including that all applicants, no matter what the program, go to panel, that we scour the, every council district and get recommendations. And our annual grants program provides those organizations that, nonprofit arts organizations that apply, core operating support and project grants to support those organizations of all sizes who have a primary mission to create, produce, or provide arts and cultural programming to enhance the quality of life of all of our residents. Through the agency's equity strategy, we reached out and have had applicants this past year from all disciplines, budget sizes, underrepresented populations, and tried to receive applications from all council districts. We are up 11% in our applications from the previous year, and the agency received new applicants because of these outreach efforts. Our annual grant-making cycle for fiscal year 20 is coming to an end, and we are ramping up for fiscal year 21. Current grantees have all received their final fiscal year 20 payments in March. Current and new organizations applied for funding with a deadline in early April, which was an extension from a March deadline, given the coronavirus pandemic. And starting next week, those applications will be reviewed by panels made up of local artists and arts professionals, community laypeople, and out-of-state experts to ensure a thorough and unbiased review. Panel recommendations are forwarded to the Phoenix Arts and Culture Commission to review and approve for funding, ensuring these organizations are good stewards of public funds. If selected, allocation recommendations are brought to you, the members of the city council, for approval in the summer, and if approved, grantees receive notification of their award, but typically don't receive their first payment until the fall. Current operating support grants range between $5,000 and $40,000 and are determined by a merit rank given by those review panels. Awards are on a sliding scale and not guaranteed and are put on that scale by budget size. To receive operating support, an organization must have a budget of over $25,000. If not, they are eligible to apply for project grants, and those awards are between $1,500 and $3,500. As my vice chair mentioned, these organizations are in need of gap funding, and that's what this would provide in essence. The emergency funding would provide that capital right now. While it won't solve all the problems, it would help these organizations think about solutions for the next year with staffing, working with individual artists that they've had to cut contracts with, and be able to use this public funding as an influential stamp of approval that we know has helped catalyze investments from other sources. So the Phoenix Office of Arts and Culture is proposing one-time emergency relief grants of $5,000 to $50,000 to arts and cultural nonprofit organizations. To manage expectations and to be equitable with our outreach strategies, we propose that grantees recommended for fiscal year 21 support would be eligible to apply for these relief fundings. These applicants would receive a supplemental application to complete by the end of May. Organizations applying will need to submit documentation of their canceled programs and narrative about the financial impact on the organization since the COVID-19 pandemic. Since the annual grant cycle requires applicants to submit responses about artistic merit, community engagement strategies, and fiscal and management information, the supplemental form would be simple to complete. The application deadline would have a short turnaround, and to expedite the process, a panel of the Phoenix Arts and Culture Commission would convene in mid-June to review those applications quickly. Awards would be flat grants based on the organization's budget size. All awarded applicants would receive notification of funding as early as June 15th, and if funding could be dispersed shortly thereafter. Final reporting would be due in December to comply with the coronavirus relief fund guidelines. So again, we're proposing these one-time grants between $5,000 and $50,000 to these organizations to support them in their general operating, which is business operations, staffing, as well as trying to hire back artists to be innovative over their programming that they'll have to reimagine for next season. And again, depending on how much is allocated for individual support, the organizational support numbers would change. The final piece of our proposal is through technical assistance. We believe the sector will need expertise on navigating the new normal. We want to help the entire sector, whether it's nonprofit arts and cultural organizations, for-profit arts businesses and artists, look for resources, as we've been doing since before the pandemic was heightened. For technical assistance, the Phoenix Office of Arts and Culture will direct the sector to city and non-city relief programs like the micro-business programs presented last week. We also would continue to virtually convene arts and cultural organizations and artists to check in with the sector and discuss their challenges, bright spots, and answer questions, especially about reopening. But we do propose to use a small portion of these funds to contract consultants and facilitators to conduct workshops, webinars, and resources that would help these organizations and individual artists navigate their financial futures moving forward. These opportunities would be open to all artists, organizations, and businesses, regardless if they received funding. These professional development programs could be around developing capacity improvements, capitalization, endowment building, and business plans for sustainable programming now and to the future. So these lay out the three areas of individual artist support, arts and cultural organizations, and technical assistance. And we're-
Wonderful.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mitch. How's the woman Stark?
Thank you. Mitch, these various organizations, for example, the Phoenix Symphony would be one, correct?
They would be eligible, yes.
So, um, they, I mean, that's a big organization. Is 50,000 going to help them? I just think of all the musicians that are a part of the symphony, and I'm sure right now they're not performing, so what do you think 50,000 can do for an organization like our great Phoenix Symphony?
Um, I don't want to speak on behalf of an organization, but Councilwoman Stark, $50,000, if I were in the symphony shoes, probably would go towards trying to pay off any debts that were owed to venues, musicians, other contractors, or try to save a salary member who might have been laid off. Again, it's probably not going to solve all their problems, but it could probably relieve at least one or two headaches from their plate as they look for other funding.
Okay, so they could continue to fundraise elsewhere, but this would be like a gap measure for them?
It would be a gap funding, and the $50,000, as you approved graciously last week, for us to apply to the National Endowment for the Arts for a $250,000 grant, which was a jobs preservation grant, that competitive pool that we are competing against 3,700 organizations nationwide. If we were not an eligible local arts agency to re-grant, we would have only been eligible, and all other applicants would have only been eligible up to $50,000. So even the Metropolitan, you know, Symphony in New York is only eligible for that amount, so that's where we based it off of, was that funding program.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Mitch and Commissioner Johnson for that great presentation and all the work that went into it, including outreach with our arts and culture organizations. I also want to join my colleagues in saying thank you to our arts and culture organizations for making us a great city and for all the sacrifices you have made to, to help us get through COVID-19. I was recently able to join mayors from other great art cities such as New York, Los Angeles, and Chicago in writing a letter of support to Congress, asking that Congress do more for our arts organizations, including adjusting the Economic Stabilization Fund to better fit the needs of arts and culture organizations, and perhaps removing the 500-employee cap for 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations on the Paycheck Protection Program, as well as additional funding for the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So I hope that Congress will be a, a partner in this as well. Also, the state of Arizona has received $1.8 billion in CARES Act funds, and I hope they will do more to support our arts and culture community. We have great institutions in Phoenix, but we have great institutions throughout the state of Arizona, and we cannot do it all alone. Mitch, a question for you on technical assistance. Is there a need to provide arts and culture organizations with assistance in understanding public health information and how they might return safely? Or do you, have you heard that that has already been adequately met from other sources?
Mayor Gallego, that is a great question, and one that we are starting to receive calls on about how to reopen, how to reopen safely. And so I think through that technical assistance, we would definitely want to work with health providers to ensure that they're opening safely for their staffs, as well as their audience members and customers. So we would definitely take anyone up on the offer to have that expertise for our arts and cultural organizations, as well as individual artists who are working in their own shops and galleries.
Wonderful, well, thank you. I would certainly support that we include ability to support those organizations with public health information. I believe some of the work we did with small businesses will help them get information they need to reopen safely. A strong economic recovery requires people to feel safe and actually be safe, and, and we want our arts and culture organizations to be included in that. They are so important to our city. We have received 34 comments from the public, not wishing to speak, but all in support of this item, and that's a robust and diverse group of stakeholders.
Mayor?
Councilwoman.
Um, I would actually like to make a motion to add additional dollars to the artist funding program. I'm just going to read a motion that I just crafted right now. I move that we allocate an additional $600,000 from the unallocated COVID-19 community investment money to the artist funding program and open the application process so that local Phoenix artists who didn't get the opportunity to apply to the statewide relief grant program can get an opportunity to apply. Additionally, I move to provide grants of up to $1,500 for each artist.
I second that.
Wonderful, a great motion from Councilwoman Pastore, with a second from Councilwoman Stark. We, we know that the need is enormous in our arts community, and I will be supporting that motion.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I'm also supportive of this, and also I want to, that we're providing the relief for the arts in the, in our community. But however, one of the things that I just wanted for us to look into, and hopefully with this motion, we will do that, is reviewing the applicants for our current grants. It's very apparent that the West Side of our city needs more attention from the arts community. I hope that the organizations that will benefit from the city's relief efforts will look at the West, at the West Side villages of O'Hambra and Maryvale, and also out in Villavez, and bring the cultural opportunities that my constituents need and deserve. Um, we were, we were looking at it, and we, and we talked to Mitch a little bit about it earlier today, but definitely we need to put a little bit more emphasis on the West Side, because at, at this moment, it doesn't seem that there's much for that part of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and perhaps we could challenge Commissioner Johnson and the Arts Commission as well to help us with a robust outreach effort before we open up the additional grants and to make sure that people for whom technology might be a challenge have a chance to apply as well. But I know our, as Mitch and both Commissioner Johnson mentioned, that the Arts and Culture Commission has really been talking about equity in a very sophisticated way, so perhaps they can help us. Councilman, uh, well, should we go to Commissioner Johnson, or should we? Uh, no, okay, Councilwoman Noakowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you for all the outreach and the great job that he's doing since he's been the director and reaching out to all the artists, and we've been hearing a lot of positive comments, so congratulations, Mitch, and, and your staff and your committees for really reaching out and talking on the issue that Sal and Laura brought up, our local artists, right? And I'll be supporting the motion and, and having more funding for local artists. I think that's really important. When we actually give out grants and all that, we should make sure that we look local first. The other thing is the larger organizations, I know they, they have professional fundraisers and, and individuals that are advisors to their committees that are fundraising on a daily basis, so, you know, I think we really need to look at helping out those smaller nonprofit organizations, those after-school programs at our city facilities, at our schools, from music to ballet to mariachis, to art programs and all that, and I like to make sure that they're included in this relief somehow, some way. So I know, Mitch, you talked about a process. How do we have these individuals that have been fundraising on their own, do these after school programs, and these dance and singing and, and instrumental programs, and have no other funding right now, and they're, how can we help them out? Or what's the process that they would have to go through to make sure that they're a part of this funding?
Mayor Gallego, members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, thank you for your kind words, and with the current $2 million and additional funds, we would have to rethink the process, but we would just ensure that those artists or collectives would complete an application and be reviewed. If they are an organization that you are recommending, what we would have them do is to complete a full organizational application, plus the supplemental that talks about the loss that the Arts and Culture Commission could review. So it would be that kind of process, again, an equi- So it would be that kind of process, again, an equitable one, that their artistic merit, their community investment and engagement initiatives, and their managerial were okay in the eyes of the Arts and Culture Commission, but we would find an equitable way to include those artists and collectives into the processes.
And Mayor, one other question?
Please.
So Mitch, is there a way to figure out if these organizations have gotten relief from other COVID CARES packages, if they got the PPP, or they've gotten other grants from others? Are you getting that into consideration before we give those grants? Because I know that there are a lot of organizations that are out there that have professional fundraisers that are tapping into all different types of resources, from the federal, to the state, to the local, and I just want to make sure that we really help out those starving artists, those individuals that really need the help, right? Do we have something set up for that?
Mayor Gallego, members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, we do not. Looking just through the lens of the National Endowment for the Arts, only 12 Phoenix-based organizations were eligible to apply directly to the NEA. One of those organizations was the Office of Arts and Culture, the other was the Arizona Commission on the Arts, so that means only 10 were eligible for that funding pool. I do know that some organizations, big and small, as well as artists who are sole proprietors, were eligible and received PPP funds, but as you know, those run out in June. And so this would be, and as well as the proposal to the NEA, would sort of help organizations and those sole proprietors through the next phase, until either another stimulus package opened up, or coronavirus was eradicated, or something. So we could look at that, but we feel that this funding would start when those other programs end. And so it's just the philosophy that we've been talking with as that gap program, but we could definitely ask on the application if they've received those funds, and the Arts and Culture Commission could take that into account, especially as we do allocations, given if we give more or less to artists, and how big that organizational pot becomes. So we can definitely look at that and have the Arts and Culture Commission think about that when they're doing the allocations that will be brought back.
Mayor, that would be nice, if he can do that. So at least we know if they're receiving funding from somewhere else or not. The other thing, too, is that just making sure that we have, everybody gets a fair share, right? I think that's what's really important. And also, the Downtown Center of the Arts, I mean, we have such a great program in downtown Phoenix. They've been with us through the good times and the bad times. They actually continued our city program when we basically had a crisis back in 2009. So I think we should really look at those organizations that helped us out and bailed out the city during our hard times, making sure that they're taken care of, too. So that's just my little advocacy there. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Powerful words, Councilman. Thank you. Good advocacy, and we should definitely remember our partners who have been with us through We certainly also want to support organizations that are giving young people safe places during the summer. It is even more challenging with COVID-19, and if there's innovative solutions. I know arts can be a lifeline for so many people, especially in even more stressful times, and so we want to remember those who are most at risk. Commissioner Johnson, I think I sort of spoke to you earlier about some of the work the commission is doing on equity, and didn't give you a chance to speak. So you do not need to speak, but any words for us?
I just want to thank you, first and foremost, Mayor, and all the city council members. I want to thank you tremendously for taking the time out today to even hear from me as a commissioner, and hear from the Office of Arts and Culture. This funding would mean a tremendous amount to the artists out there, but the reason for that is because we are working so hard for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and how we distribute those funds. And so now we are trying to be much more sensitive to artists who have been sort of off the grid and have not been applying for grants previously. It can mean that much more to them, especially given these unprecedented times. So we are absolutely interested, your mayor, in making sure that we get all of the information out there to these arts organizations, and we are pushing forward the message of the diversity, equity, and inclusion, and letting folks in this community know that artists and arts organizations, that the city council is committed to arts and culture. So we are prepared to do the advocacy that's necessary and do the outreach.
Wonderful. Thank you. The Arts and Culture Commission has been so important to creating a vibrant city, and we need you more now than ever.
Thank you. And we need you all as well.
Additional council member comments? All right, so we will then go to roll call on Councilwoman Pastore's motion to approve the staff recommendation with additional funding. Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Just clarification, are we doing one, two, or three? Are we just going with additional?
Three. We're going beyond three. Well, Councilwoman Pastore, do you want to read your motion? Hold on, hold on.
It's a whole new motion. It's beyond three. I move that we allocate an additional $600,000 from the unallocated COVID-19 community investment money to the artist funding program and open the application process so that local Phoenix artists who didn't get the opportunity to apply to the statewide relief grant program can get an opportunity to apply. Additionally, I move to provide grants of up to $1,500 for each artist.
So those are local artists, right? Just for clarification.
Yes, Phoenix artists, yes. Phoenix local artists.
With that, Mayor, yes.
Councilwoman Pastore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Waring?
No.
Councilwoman Williams? Vice Mayor Wardato?
Yes.
Mayor Gallego?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion carries six to two.
Wonderful. Thank you. The Phoenix City Council has allocated $2.6 million to support our arts and culture institutions. We are a vibrant arts and culture city, and we hope this aid will be important as we navigate COVID-19. This is our final agenda item for today, so we are adjourned.
Thank you.